Alrighty folks. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here for our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on this fifteenth of September. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order here. And we're going to start with a roll call. And since we have our chairperson, Ms. Shumway, not here this evening, we'll just go ahead and do a roll call. All present say aye. So we'll start here with Bodie Kirbin.
Aye.
And Mr. Bill Leester.
Yeah.
All right, present. All right. And then all three of us are here. So we have a quorum here. So we'll go ahead and get started. Take it away, Dana.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Commissioners, good evening. I believe the first item on your agenda is the meeting minutes. But correct me if I'm wrong, Shelley.
Perfect. And so what we're going to do is do a real quick review of the meeting minutes. So this is the first item here, one A, consideration to approve the July eighth meeting minutes. All in favor? Say... Oh, sorry. I need a motion. Sorry. I need a motion to approve the minutes from July eighth.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the July eighth meeting minutes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirbin. And can I get a second on that?
I'll take it.
Thank you so much there, Commissioner Leester. All right. So with that, all in favor to approve these minutes? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So the motion passes. So those meeting minutes have been approved. All right. So we're going to head on to item one B, which is a public hearing in consideration of case number UP-21-04. It's a request for a conditional use permit to allow a marijuana dispensary establishment in the C2 Intermediate Commercial Zoning District pursuant to zoning code fourteen-five-nineteen D for the property located at twenty-two-fifty East Highway sixty, Suite M, Assessor Parcel Number two-zero-six-zero-four-zero-one-zero A. And we'll go ahead and open it up for information here from Dana.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Commissioners. If you recall, earlier this year, in February, actually, Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to City Council to adopt a resolution to incorporate language in our zoning ordinance consistent with Proposition two oh seven of last year that was voter approved, which effectively authorizes the use of adult in cultivation, extraction, and manufacturing, and testing of recreational marijuana for adult use. That said, the city anticipated we may be in a position to receive a license in our municipality, as we previously had had a medical marijuana license, which had since been moved out of the county, not leaving any, besides in case in any medical marijuana or recreational marijuana dispensaries. So this particular agenda item is brought to us by Lawrence Health Services, who did receive, win lottery with Arizona Department of Health Services to receive a recreational adult use dispensary license. And that's exactly what this request is. I'll take you through this brief presentation. Stop me at any point if you have any questions on this material, or global questions on the ordinance, or anything surrounding this request. I'll always remind you, conditional use permits run with the land for which it was approved. So as owners move along, that approval stays with the property as long as it's maintained in good standing. Now, the dispensary conditional use permits, or marijuana establishment use permits are more constrained. They're subject to a license holder. And there always has to be a license holder valid on the premises to be able to operate and maintain that conditional use permit in good standing. So that's just something unique. And something else that's unique in the city with these marijuana establishment use permits is that City Council ultimately grants the approval, unlike our other conditional use permits. So today, you will be considering this item and potentially making a recommendation to City Council. So that said, also, conditional use permits require a public hearing, should all know. So after I finish my presentation, I'll just remind you, after questions, we need to open up and open, receive a public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and then close that public hearing, and then move on with your discussion and potential motion or action. And then finally, conditional uses are allowed in a particular zoning district for a specific location with special conditions and standards for operation of such use to ensure the protection of the surrounding properties. So there's something unique in this case. Obviously, there's some sensitivities around the dispensing of marijuana in retail sales. We've got safety concerns, as well as locational concerns around sensitive uses that you see a discussion in my staff report that explains those sensitive uses and the distances of the proposed location to those sensitive uses. This is a site plan. The area surrounding the property, you see it located there. It's one unit. It's called Unit M. Here at the Globe Marketplace, it's all a single parcel. And this is actually a parcel boundary that you see behind here. And then inline retail with two anchors, or three larger retail buildings, and then the smaller inline area where this project is proposed. In your packets, you have the building plans, tenant improvement plans. I will let you know, we did receive a revised and updated floor plan today, which I was made aware of a few weeks ago, that it might be forthcoming. The plan in your packet shows about thirty-two-hundred square feet of floor area for that Unit M. And that has been shrunk down to twenty-two-hundred, just over twenty-two-hundred square feet. And we'll make that exhibit. I have that exhibit available for you to see tonight, but just a smaller footprint, if you will. The red area surrounding, over the aerial here, is all our, the city's C2 zoning districts, and that's one of the districts that marijuana establishments are authorized to locate in by use permit. The area that you see uncolored is county, Hila County jurisdiction, unincorporated. Now, keep in mind, part of the notification procedures for use permits to notify all property owners within three hundred feet, as well as place an advertisement in the newspaper, which we did for three consecutive Wednesdays prior to fifteen days prior to this hearing, as well as mailing all the property owners within three hundred feet of the property. And I will wrap that up with our public input at the end, my discussion of the public input at the end of this presentation. Here's a close up, again, the site location within that inline retail. You notice in the staff report that the narrative, actually, provided by the applicant, did mention of a drive-through, and there was a drive-through location previously contemplated. But just prior to the submittal, they made a shift on the property location, and this location does not have the ability to operate a drive-through. And that's noted in the stipulations and staff recommended approval, staff recommended conditions of approval in your staff report. There is a significant grade difference between this site and the properties, the residential properties to the east. This parcel I'm pointing to is actually also commercial zoned in the city. And then beyond that, I'm not clear on what those larger lots are zoned, as the county does not publish their zoning map. And I have to make special requests to see an antiquated parcel map with handwritten zoning designations on it. So for that reason, we do know there's a commercial operation right here at the end, or at the corner of Country Club Terrace, and then a couple other home sites back there. But the point of my bringing this up is that this property, the site, is about forty feet lower in elevation. And there was an abrupt cut created to flatten or pad out that corner. So there's a significant difference in grade, and it's probably very unlikely that these properties up here can see, that they probably catch the corner of the roofs of the building down there, but don't have direct access, obviously, to that property, vehicular access, or even it looks like hiking trails and so forth. So there's a geographical separation of this property to the surrounding properties as well. But as I noted in my staff report, we meet all of the minimum, with exceptional distances. We meet the code requirements for separations from the sensitive uses, such as residential zone property, churches, and school locations. And the nearest church and the nearest school are approximately a half mile away. Moving on. Again, close up of the site. And then this is that updated floor plan I mentioned. I believe the original proposal extended to where you see this line here, and it's been shrunk. So obviously, you have this. This would be the entrance side of the inline retail storefront, a retail display area, and then cashier counter. And usually, that's behind a protected material. And then in the rear, inventory, lock, security cameras, as you can see throughout the entire facility. And please know that I did forward you the adopted rules and regulations from ADHS on the application of this legislation, which was adopted in June, wasn't not available, only contemplated during our review or discussion of the ordinance that the city has adopted. But those are now in place. And if you're curious, or hopefully you had an opportunity to take a look. But the ADHS State Arizona Department of Health Services has a very specific and involved process for licensing, and for the regulation of how marijuana establishments contain, operate, and sell, and secure their properties. And that's where that, that's where those regulations are contained. All right. We've had a good few discussions with Dale Walters, your Chief of Police. He's fully aware with us, and also as part of staff in support of this request. And he also is fully aware of the Arizona Department of Health Services rules and regulations that apply to this use. Finally, staff is recommending the Planning and Zoning Commission motion to approve this case with the conditions listed in your staff report. The city has not received any inquiries or comments from our public advertisement of this public hearing. There may be people in the audience today to speak on behalf of themselves in this case. So with that, after you ask me any questions you'd like, and my response is, you're welcome to hear from the applicant, who is available online, Sarah Pressler, and then open up the public hearing. So with that, again, I recommend approval, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
All right. Thank you so much there, Dana. Does anyone have any questions at this time, fellow commissioners?
I have none.
All right. Go ahead there, Bill.
Oh, I say I have none. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No question.
Okay. One of my concerns that I have, I know that folks, you know, there are folks out there that do, you know, need some type of medical intervention for, you know, their health situations that they have. One of my concerns, however, I know that that's a really busy intersection. There are a lot of accidents there that I've seen and heard of over the years. I guess I just didn't know, you know, what the folks, you know, in our police department thought about that. You know, I do believe that marijuana has been proven to impair people's judgment, especially like, you know, operating machinery and whatnot. So I just had concerns about the safety from that intersection.
And Dana, we do have a member of the Globe PD here in the audience to speak, if you'd like.
Excellent. Dana, we would love to hear some input regarding maybe traffic incidents at this intersection. I did speak with, this came up early in the review process, spoke with Jerry Barnes, your city engineer, about that. And he maintained that this intersection, and as you can see, I'll share it on this graphic, share my screen again, on this graphic, is a very, it's a junction between two state routes, basically. So there is a lot of traffic running through there. It's a very expanded infrastructure for an intersection. As you can see with these considerable deceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, and then this large island through lanes. So our city engineer felt that the ADOT's design in this intersection was very much adequate, and is actually designed to manage much more traffic than what actually occurs there today. That is, that has been the response of our city engineer. One other point, keep in mind, it is illegal to drive under the influence of marijuana. And they're not allowed to consume on the property also, as part of the ADHS rules and regulations. It's also part of our ordinance, our city ordinance.
Thank you so much there, Dana. Now, we also do have an officer, Officer Williams, either. If you could just, I guess, maybe state your full name for us, just so that way anyone that's listening can know who you are. And thank you for coming.
It's Lieutenant Steve Williams with Globe Police Department. So he actually very adequately responded to your question the same way I was, as with any intersection in our city that's busy, and we have a lot of accidents. We have concerns with that. But as he said, there's already laws in place that they can't drive while under the influence of marijuana or any other intoxicating substance. And also, they cannot consume their THC products at that location. So it's not like a bar where they're going to go there, consume, you know, and leave intoxicated. So with that said, we always have concerns over traffic in any area, but we don't feel this gives a rise to any further concern than we would normally have.
Gotcha. Thank you, Lieutenant. I appreciate that.
If I can ask a real quick question. It kind of caveats to what Commissioner Durnum was said, because this is not really a smoke shop. It's a lot different than that. There's no consuming on premises. Because I was kind of concerned about ventilation in the building, but I guess that's not really, wouldn't really be a concern so much.
Well, it wouldn't be a concern with smoking. I don't know what exactly the code would be with having those products, and if they're supposed to have any normal ventilation. But as far as the consumption of it, that's not an issue, because they're not supposed to do it there.
And to that point regarding odors, it's one of your conditions of approval, that they're not allowed to emit any noticeable, detectable odor. And the applicant is available to probably address the filtering and how they maintain the air quality and no odor.
Much there. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Lieutenant Williams there, Bill?
No, not for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And at this point, I'd just be interested in, you know, if there are any highlights that Sarah, and thank you for coming this evening, Sarah. But yes, if you happen to have any highlights that you'd like to share with us, that would be, that would be good to know. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Sarah Pressler, and I'm the applicant, Lawrence Health Services, the winner of the lottery for this particular county in the April 2021 Arizona Department of Health Services process. We are the applicant at the subject property, and this is the same area that we had intended to operate when we came in and talked with you originally to work through what was approvable and what might be a good spot to do business in Globe. So it's nice to be back and to see ourselves on the full circle of this moment. I was in Globe today, had munch at Guado's, and I then went over to Safeway to just kill a little tide before the meeting. And one of the girls at the checkout told me about what was happening traffic-wise, and suggested that I travel while it was light out. So I was going to be with you. I was there in town. And then she said after she was on the road on that detour, she really suggested I travel a lot with still daylight. So I'm here in Superior, pulled over, but I appreciate you allowing us to appear by Zoom. I think it's just a safer option than driving home at night that roundabout way.
We hear you there.
We, yeah, thank you. We are so excited to be doing business in Globe. You know, it is a business strategy of ours to operate and work in the rural parts of the state. We were one of the original license holders in Mojave County, and we still have that dispensary there in Mojave County to this day. So really familiar with operating marijuana dispensaries. We have been doing so for, how many have I now, nine years or something like that in Arizona. And we are considered to be subjects matter experts in this particular business area. As I had previously shared with you, I'm on the board of the Arizona Dispensaries Association, which is the trade association. I used to chair its compliance committee. Now I chair its rules committee. So I'm deeply involved and communicate on a regular basis with the Bureau Chief at the Department of Health Services and the Arizona Department of Revenue, both state agencies that oversee the kind of work that we do. The floor plan before you demonstrates that we have experience, because you will see that our inventory in each of those areas in the sales floor is contained in a locked area. And the flow, I think, will support a really transparent and open transaction for both safety and for consumer engagement. We have never had a single incidence that is of any substantial nature at any of our businesses that we run. We currently own multiple cultivation facilities in the tri-state area, in Mojave County, and over in San Bernardino County in the Gulf of California. So we're really experienced cultivators. We're intending to only do retail dispensing in Globe, so we're not intending to exercise the other arms of this marijuana establishment license in Globe. So this is an application for retail sales. We are extremely aware of the regulations, as I've mentioned. So we understand there's no consumption on property. We recognize what the responsibilities are to be, you know, not just good citizens, but good operators. There is a new provision in Proposition two oh seven that allows for unannounced inspections. You know, prior in the original voter initiative, the state would say like, we'll be there Tuesday at two to inspect you. And as an industry, we just recognize like, we're regulated by the Department of Health, there should be unannounced inspections. And so we were one of the first operators that said like, we completely support these ideas. So we are subject to both announced and unannounced inspections by the state. We have them on a regular basis throughout the rest of our business operations. I'm a parent of four children, none of which have ever done come to work with Mom Day. So we don't, we don't even take our own kids in to stop by and pick up a check, or drop off a pad of paper. Even our own children, they'll go into the business with us. They would be supervised outside of the business. And then in closing, I would just share with you that I was at the subject site today. I recognize that there is a liquor store adjacent, and there's a lot of other activity in the area. I've noticed that our business tends to have an increased public presence from a safety perspective, because every square inch of our building is under camera and video, and it's being monitored both onsite and by our off-site security team, as well as emergency services with panic buttons and silent alarms. So we have cameras that will be available, you know, for public safety purposes, not just inside our facility, but on the exterior areas of our facility, in the event that there's something negative that might happen in the adjacent space. And we're a well-lit business, so it's good for us to be able to be well-lit inside. There's not going to be strange window coverings on the front or anything. You'll be able to walk right by and see transparently what's happening inside of our business at all times. So it's adult business, bright, well-regulated business, and it's a business that maintains its video recordings, both in a live nature and then in a look-back period. So if there's a question that the police department has, we can always rewind that video and pick up video from prior time, too. So we're really happy to be doing business in Globe. As you saw the recent reports come out about what's happening financially in the industry, we look forward to contributing to the tax base of the community and being good citizens. I was at a trade association meeting today, and I'll just end with this. They said, have you seen all of the advertisements for online sports betting? And people were like, yeah, we saw that. They said, the economic development projections for online sports betting, which is getting all this attention, in the whole year, is a half of one month of what happens in cannabis industry. The whole year for sports betting and their economic projections is projected to be half of one month in cannabis collectively. So I think we're just really excited to be able to contribute to the city's initiatives and to the important projects that happen, as well as what Proposition two oh seven did in releasing the Marijuana Fund, the Medical Marijuana Fund. If you ask your county health department whether they receive funding from that, they should say yes. So there's a significant economic benefit here, not just a land use benefit to improving a currently vacant space. So I have been able to answer the questions you had. It's been such a pleasure to work with Dana. We had a choice where to bring our business in the county. We really did. And it really made sense for us to be in Globe, and we're really happy to be in Globe, and we're intentionally wanting to do business in Globe. And we will be operating this business. Lawrence is the name of my oldest child. So this is definitely our business. We intend to run it, and we're really happy about being in your community.
Thank you so much there, Sarah. Are there any questions that my fellow commissioners have for Sarah?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions from you there, Bill?
Nope, none at all.
Alrighty. If you give me a few moments here, I'm just gathering a couple of thoughts here. And so I was just kind of gathering my thoughts here, Sarah. So I know that you mentioned, so people are going to be able to see inside. You mentioned it's well-lit. It almost sounds kind of like, like a bank, you know, with a lot of cameras and whatnot. So what would say people see from the street? Can they see the product being, you know, sold? Is it on display? How does that work?
Yeah, good question. So you'll see a few entry doors on the floor plan that Dana shared with you prior. That's our adjusted floor plan. And it's true, our narrative does describe a similarly like located property that we actually decided that this one would be a better fit for us. So what, we see multiple doors, but I think those two doors to the right are going to be emergency exit only doors. Those people will just leave. And then there's going to be the single entrance where people will come in and out over by the reception desk up here in the front left of the floor plan that you see. You see that exterior door there. That's where someone will be standing to greet and screen people as they come in. The person at that door will have security features, both on their person and at that desk, in the event that someone tries to come into the facility that doesn't belong there. There'll be an immediate and silent, sometimes audible notification that will happen in that instance. But again, that hasn't happened with us in the last almost decade. We don't anticipate it will happen, but it is an important security feature to note. We also can see all people that are coming to the door prior to memorizing the door. So people will enter the door there. And then while it is well-lit, the tables that you see throughout the sales area there, those tables might have one example of a box or a package, but there is no like open teaching or education whereby product is touched or handled or processed outside of its like faux box or faux packaging. Anything that's contained in those table areas would be a locked product inside of there. So there might be drawers or other containers for storage and inventory purposes, because when there's square footage restrictions, it's really complex to be able to store your inventory. But as you see, most of the inventory is stored in the back sort of yellowish area. That's where we have our inventory stored. The very strange process to go through. have our inventory stored. The very strange process to go through and like, most of the time, for example, when banks go through a zoning process, they don't tell you where their safe is. But you know, there you have it. Hopefully one day this can get restricted, but we'll talk about that later. So in the back of the business is where we hold our inventory. And in that center area there, that dark sort of greener area, that is where our sales area is. So after someone shops our floor with us, a bit like an Apple store experience, then they're going to go to that main center area there and that's where they're going to buy their product, obtain their product. That product will leave in some kind of child resistant packaging in accordance to state law and our own business practice because we're all parents. And so the product will leave our business in a container that's, that is child resistant. And so people don't like walk out with like half a cigarette in their mouth or, you know, a container in their hand, for example, as you see in some other businesses. So they'll leave in exit packaging. And they'll go generally through that main center door by reception. If there does become a larger flow, I guess we have the flexibility of the second door, but our intention is, and we've operated for the last nine years using one door and we really like that security, that security protocol. The state changed its rules and allowed for multiple entrances and doors. We don't actually prefer that. We didn't advocate for it. So it's easier for us to just use a single door. We can kind of track who's coming in and coming out. So to answer your question, you'll be able to see in that there's like adults and human beings in the event of like some instance or situation, but it's not like you'd, you'd be able to look in a restaurant and see like, oh, that person ordered steak. We're not gonna, it's not like to that level of visibility within products. And the descriptive nature, like if four teenagers walked by, they're not gonna, they're not gonna have the capacity to like actively see or there's nothing that's going to be promoted on a front-facing basis in that, in that store.
Gotcha there. Thank you so much, Sarah. Another question I had was, I know that you mentioned that there hadn't been any incidences, I think in the last 10 years or so. So how many locations are there for the business? I mean, for this business or the company? Sorry?
Yeah. So we, each license allows you to do multiple types of activities. So location is a little bit of a red herring. So from a retail dispensary standpoint, we have one retail store in Bullhead City, Arizona. That store opened in Mojave Valley in the middle of nowhere next to a church for a number of years. And we actually moved it up to the city center in Bullhead because one of the owners of the business or husband works for the city and they just expressed to us how much they benefit from the sales tax revenue in the city. So we agreed to move our business north of Highway 95 and move into the city limits for the sales tax benefit they would receive. So we operate that store in Bullhead City, but it was originally located, as I said, in Mojave Valley. And it was one of the first stores that was awarded out of the round of 2012 licenses in Arizona. Debbie of Debbie's Dispensary has been running in that store and she still goes there every, every day at that store there in, in Bullhead City. We have another retail store in Peoria, Arizona on Lake Pleasant Parkway. And that store is located in a very similarly situated space as this location where it's in a shopping center and it's one suite in a shopping center. The original store, actually, the Bullhead Store, the 2012 license, that original location, backing up a bit here, and its current location are also both located in like a common shopping area. The Bullhead one is located next to a hospice office. The Peoria one in Peoria, Arizona, on Lake Pleasant Parkway, is located next to a doctor's office. And I think there's like a food business on the other side of that. Then we have a third location in North Phoenix at the intersection of I-17 and the 101 off 27th Avenue. And that's our North Phoenix store. And that business is located in a medical complex. And when you walk out the front door, you're facing a Wendy's and out the back door, you're facing a Starbucks and a Kinko's and I think some kind of pizza spot. And then it shares adjacent suite walls with medical physicians offices. And then we have, so those are our three operating retail dispensaries. We have two fully operational cultivation facilities in Arizona in Mojave County. And we have a fully operational cultivation facility just down Highway 95 across the state border in Needles, California. We have been authorized to also open additional licenses in Arizona. We were, we won the lottery in Safford, Arizona. So we'll be opening a store in Safford, Arizona. And we also were awarded the license in Yuma County. And so we'll be planning to open that license. The plan is in, in Somerton, just adjacent to the city of Yuma. So that's, that's where we will be operating. We will be operating in Globe. We will be operating in Safford. We will be operating in Somerton. And then the last location is that we've been permitted and approved to open a dual license, which is a medical and recreational license. And we started our tenant improvements at that location and that's in, in the Maricopa County area. So we have three current operating dispensaries and then we have four coming online that will be open by Halloween of 2022 at the latest. And then we have three robust cultivation facilities. We currently in our company employ well, well over 200 people and we're growing pretty rapidly every month.
Gotcha. Thank you there. And I guess from like a security standpoint, so, so this will be a dispensary, I guess, just in general, just humor me here, is there, I guess, what kind of inventory is kept there? I know it sounds like, you know, to have so many cameras, you know, so much lighting and whatnot. I guess, can you share with us just some general, throw a dart at us like about how much inventory is in there? So there could be, I guess, that where it could be a possible target for theft, right?
Yeah, I think like any business, it's a possible target for theft. It's sort of the dumbest place to try to do something like that because of the high level of security. It's like the person on premises doesn't have access to the full safe or resources that are on premises at all times, similar to what you might find in a Walgreens pharmacy. Like the pharmacist can't actually unlock all of the medications at once and can't access the safe after, you know, it's two o'clock in the afternoon or something. So there are, we have similar protocols within our business that I would just first share with you that are privately imposed like Walgreens, CVS, Safeway might impose. We don't hold more inventory than is necessary for the operations of that store. You know, the, the stores in the Phoenix area are really different than our rural store in Mojave County. They have just higher demand, a different population. And so there are really different types of business models there. Because we're vertically integrated as a business, we really can control the amount of flour that we choose to have in the store. So we're not like, we're not at the, I don't even know, like the demands of the open market because we're completely vertically integrated. I don't have to just like take whatever somebody gives me and store it there all day long. So on a demand basis, we'll have delivery to our store from our own cultivation for our flour. And then to the extent that we need to diversify our inventory with other products like maybe a vape pen or an edible product that we do not produce. In those instances, then we generally just keep inventory, you know, on demand based on what's happening for what that population might be consuming. But we don't have the need because we have distribution center businesses and we have other facilities. Like this isn't our main storage area for inventory. So you wouldn't come here and find like, it's not our hub or something for all of our product.
Gotcha there. Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Yeah, some, some stores, you know, they're, they're only owned by one per, they have one business. So like everything gets dumped there and they just make that big purchase and it just, it's like a sitting target. But we're a little different because we're so robust and diversified that we're able to really manage our inventory, I think, in a more reasonable way.
Thank you. Any other questions for you, Phil?
Hi, this is Commissioner Kirven. I just wanted to ask, knowing now that sites and locations can differ, the Globe site, will that be both recreational and medicinal or just, just, just retail or?
It's a really good question. So each zoning application that comes before the commission must specify the type of business activity that it's doing. So the authorization to do business in Globe is not a uniform blanket authorization, as Dana explained prior. What it allows in this particular application is for us, even though we are authorized as a business to do certain activities. The only thing that you're authorizing here is for a retail store. So you're not authorizing us to have a little kitchen or you're not authorizing us to have a laboratory or to grow marijuana plants in the back room. Like that would be a really bad strategy. So for us, this is, this is simply a retail store. In Arizona, there are no more medical licenses that are issuing. The original hundred plus licenses that issued in 2012 and 2016, when Prop 207 passed, they basically married up with an adult use license and, and became dual licensees. So at the Bullhead Store, at the Peoria Store, at the North Phoenix Store, we sell the same product, one for 16% less tax than the other, if you have a medical card. And then the other difference there, right, it's a tax difference if you've got your medical card, 16% less. The other difference there is there are some edible products that are really high dose, for example, for some cancer patients. We will not be able to hold those products in our store because this is a marijuana establishment only license. So inventory, the inventory with the exception of some of these high dose edibles, so our inventory will not contain these medical only products. But other products like flour and vape, you could get if you were a medical marijuana patient, but unfortunately, because we don't hold the medical license and this is only a marijuana establishment, meaning adult use license, everyone who comes to our store, whether they're a medical cardholder or an adult use consumer, would need to pay that same tax rate for that product. So we will serve medical patients, of course, and we can talk about what like maybe a business discount would be for them. But from a tax perspective, it'll all be considered inventory and they'll be purchasing at that consumer entry rate for adult use. We will not be able to serve any children who are medical patients. So there are a handful of children in the state that require medication for seizures or severe disorders. This would not be a location where one of those children could come and get medication from us. But we could refer someone to another one of our businesses that, that could help their family in that instance. But we wouldn't be serving them from the store or dispensing to them from the store.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. This is really nuanced, strange stuff, this cannabis stuff. This is just like, I mean, we're, we're, I've, I've been in business almost a decade on this and like, I'm learning every week about new things, even though like I'm giving continuing legal education lectures all over the country. Like I'm still learning every single week, something new because we're in emergency rulemaking right now. So the state, just as you have the rules, like they're rewriting them this week again. So, you know, this is a, it's a moving target, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna work really hard to be good communicators and, and good stewards in the community as we go forward.
Thank you so much, Sarah. And do you have any questions, Commissioner Leester?
No, I don't.
Right there. All right. I think that's good. And now I'm gonna open it up here for a discussion here, fellow commissioners at this point. And I think we, do we, and Dana, if you can correct me here, do we still need to open it up for a public hearing now?
Yes, you do. So when you're ready, strike your gavel and you're opening the public hearing.
All right. So we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing.
And Shelley, have you heard any input from anybody through Zoom? And I know I don't believe our YouTube is live right now.
It, Mr. Chairman and the committee and to Dana, we have no communication in our, you checked the council email? Yeah, no communication council email. We have the city phone and that's not showing anything. And looking out, we see no one in the audience. So I believe we have no one wishing to speak to this at this time.
All right. We'll just give it another just 30 seconds just to see if anyone is having issues with anything. And I have my little watch going on here, so I'll keep an eye on it.
I do see this flyer that was dated the 24th of August, Dana. It looks really good. It details everything pretty, pretty well.
Yeah, I think Vice Chair and Commissioners, and consistent with the discussion through the ordinance process, we did, you know, we did have a very limited public input on this topic.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we are filming this hearing. We are not live streaming it. And, but it will be edited and posted, I think by midday, end of the day tomorrow. And so, but just, just for the record, we had technical difficulties and we're not able to, to livestream it, but it will be available for, for people to look at.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. And at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing as no one has called in or anything like that. All righty. And with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for a vote. Well, first we have to get a motion to approve. Can I get a motion to approve this conditional use permit number UP 21-04?
I make a motion to approve the case.
Thank you. Motion accepted. And can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, Commissioner Leester. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, and that's three in approval. So the motion passes. Get that there. All righty. And thank you so much, Sarah. We appreciate your wonderful answers there to our questions and getting us all filled in with the details. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll go ahead on to
Thank you.
Item, you're welcome and have a good evening. Have a safe trip.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And item 1C, which is a consideration to initiate a text amendment to the Globe zoning code to permit onsite temporary construction offices and security trailers for sites with an active building and/or grading permit. And what I'm going to do right now is just make my way over to that section. All righty. And I know that Dana, thank you so much for expanding upon this for us and bringing up your recommendation. And I saw there some information there from Apache Junction and Fountain Hills as well as to what they're doing. So if you'd like, you can go ahead and take, take it away.
You got it. Thank you very much, Vice Chair, Commissioners. This general item was actually on your July 8th meeting. If you recall, it was a very short meeting due to some conflicts in scheduling and that was an off night. That was a Thursday night, which we don't normally meet for. So anyway, we tabled this item from the 8th to a future date and today would be the day. This particular text amendment is in process of being initiated. So what that means is that it's just before you tonight to get some feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately get your direction. If you agree that this is an ordinance that the city needs to implement or should consider, you direct staff to initiate it. And what that effectively does is starts our adoption process and public hearing process. So which includes an advertisement, just like the conditional use permit, a little more so. And then holding a public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission on the final text that results on the ordinance. And then should the commission wish to forward a recommendation to council or either way, you'll forward a recommendation to council whether to approve or deny that resolution. The city council will then hold a public hearing as well and, and then take action and either make it law or, or not. So what this is, and if you recall, we discussed previously, I noted many communities have ordinances that would allow a construction trailer onsite to house security personnel or the general contractor or contractors to make it easier to construct. And you usually see that in more remote areas, not necessarily remote areas, but areas where, you know, they want somebody onsite. A lot of times you'll see it for a single family residence or more commercial type of operations. You'll definitely usually have somebody onsite, especially in a remote area or away from the urban areas such as Globe where, you know, that, that hour and a half a day drive for a contractor who likes to start very early in the morning and work a long day tend to end up preferring to be onsite and they're more effective in that way. And they can secure the property as well. We're keeping an eye on And they can secure the property as well or keep an eye on it. So anyway, uh, we did pull up three different, uh, examples that we've come across, including Hela County's ordinance. To allow this, uh, and I'll share my screen quickly. To just give you an idea of how we break this down. Here's Hela County's very limited six month, uh, period that they're allowed to do with an active building permit. Apache Junction gets in a little more detail, eight months is what they would allow. Uh, for the construction of a single family home. I think they had different, uh, different schedule for the different types of construction. Uh, the types of development, commercial, industrial, residential and so forth. Where subdivisions tend to take a long time to improve at times. So they would probably give a much longer year, couple year period for a subdivision infrastructure. Uh, and so what, and then Fountain Hills, uh, also has something similar, building a lot of custom homes in that area. Uh, and a lot of hard digging, uh, requires a lot of extra time onsite. So anyway, staff has taken what we've learned, uh, through our research. And, uh, we have had interest expressed in the community to have, uh, onsite construction office. And to be able to basically to live on that property in an RV or some sort during the construction of, of a home. So what we have, uh, prepared is this language as you see here. Uh, we are more generous than the other codes that we looked at. We're offering up to a complete year for the construction of a home, uh, for that, um. Storage or, uh, sorry, the, uh, construction office to be located and somebody residing on that property. Uh, in a, in a, in a trailer of some sort or camper, uh, they have to have a valid permit. Uh, for building or grading has to be in effect to be on that property, number one, or to receive the administrative approval. To locate your, your, hook up your RV there while you're constructing your home. Uh, it's gotta be removed immediately upon stoppage of construction. If something comes up or if, um, uh, the permit expires and they don't. So if there, there's an incentive to have meaningful progress and comply with the building permit. Procedures, um, and keep that active onsite and finish your project. Uh, ultimately it needs, it would be located in a manner that where we allow accessory structures. So we don't let them go right up to the property line. We want them within the, you know, some setbacks for property lines to be respectful for adjacent properties. And that would also be part of the use permit that we would issue should an ordinance like this become, uh, effective in the city. Uh, we would look at that site plan and make sure we're not creating any concerns for other neighbors. Uh, of that location of a, of a, of a unit. Uh, and then no event shall a temporary construction office security corridors be permitted for more than one year. That's what we give them, one year. Um, unless it's necessary for a large commercial or industrial project, five acres or more, or subdivision improvements. Again, those take a while too. So that's it. Uh, again, uh, staff would recommend that they, uh, city strongly consider this type of ordinance. To grant some flexibility and easier, um, ways to, um, be present on property to construct. Uh, new, new buildings. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions. And again, uh, your action tonight would simply be, uh, should, do you like, if you like this to direct staff to, or, or, or vote to initiate this text amendment. And then we'll bring it back in, in the coming month.
Thank you so much, Sarah Dana. I appreciate those details there. Um, at this point, are there any questions that my fellow commissioners have for Dana at this time?
I don't have any.
All right. Um, how about you there, Commissioner Leester?
No, no, actually I was surprised you didn't already have this, but, uh, I don't have any questions.
Right, perfect. Thank you. Um, yeah, one question I had for you there, Dana, as I was, uh, looking here. I think on one of them, as I was, uh, reading it earlier, I'm trying to remember which one it is. If you bear with me, I'm just kind of scanning through. I know that, um, on the. Recommendation that you have here toward the bottom of the page, it just mentions, uh, to provide housing for security personnel. Um, what does that include? Does that include like maybe a, um, a homeowner that's kind of like do it, kind of do it yourself? I know that seems to be a type of, uh. I don't know, builder that I've seen here locally where folks, you know, will start building it themselves or have, you know, contractors help them as well. So does, I guess, what does security personnel encompass? Just so that way I'm, I, I can be aware of that.
That's correct. Uh, I think. Well, the idea is that when you have a construction site, things tend to get stolen from construction sites on occasion. Especially areas that have a lot of construction. Um, it, it, in like in a situation in Glow, we have many lots and vacant lots or un, underdeveloped lots. Or, or need for improvement of dilapidated structures and things like that. Um, or upgrading of structures, you know, you've got a lot of product and supply, uh, materials coming onto that property. Um, and we don't have a requirement that they chain link and secure that property. So having a security personnel onsite to be there and aware. Uh, and keep an eye on materials and, and who's coming on and off the property, uh, is what that's for. So they could, if they, if it's a contractor, usually it would just be the GC there to keep an eye on stuff. In a single family residential kind of scenario. Um, uh, a larger subdivision improvement, so we're, let's say we get a hundred lot subdivision going in. And they've got a lot of material onsite and copper and other things. They would tend to have a construct, uh, maybe a specific company, a security company onsite. Uh, and that they would reside in that, uh. Unit. To secure the property, keep an eye on things. So that, that answers your question.
I'll thank you there. Um, so I guess, so this is for. Just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly here, is it that it's for, uh, larger types of. I guess, construction work or could, could this also include, you know, someone who just bought a lot? I know that we had discussed it last time, you know, say if a person bought a small lot and they were wanting to, you know, start building something themselves or. Putting together like a manufactured home or something like that, would it include them in this type of, uh?
It would.
Okay, gotcha. So.
Anybody with an active building permit or grading permit.
Okay, gotcha.
And we look at it and, you know, we'll have, because it's an administrative use process, we'll ask the questions. You know, the whole, I think the biggest concern. I've seen or would have is we don't want this to become their new home and not finish their building. So, uh, there's very much, from my perspective, uh, I would be very diligent in applying this type of code. And being clear with applicants on that expectation.
Right, yeah, and I like that, uh, I think that total of one year over a two year period, I think that's, that's good. I think that kind of recognizes, I think, some of the needs and patience needed in our area, I think, just for some of the realities we work with, so.
And keep in mind also, this is just the initiation, so we can noodle this more and make some modifications to that language through the ordinance. Uh, update, adoption process.
That's true. Yes, thank you so much.
I will make a note.
Um, any other questions from fellow commissioners?
I don't have any. I'm good.
Or any comments or anything like that? All right, with that, um, thank you so much, Dana. We appreciate you, uh, filling this in there. So at this point, uh, can I get a motion to approve that we move forward with? Uh, just, I was drafting, uh, and moving forward and drafting this, um, information. Let me bring up that.
Initiation of this text amendment.
Yes, there you go. The initiation of this here text amendment. Um, so I can get a motion on that?
I'd like to motion to, uh, go ahead and move forward on that.
All right, thank you. And then can I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. All right, and, um, all in favor, we'll go ahead and open it up for a vote now. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and so with that, the motion passes to, uh, begin the drafting. And with that, are there any other items there, Dana, that you wanted to go over? I noticed that there was another page here toward the end of the packet. I wasn't too sure what that related to. Bear with me. Um, it looks like it's some, uh, letter. I don't know if it was meant to be discussed tonight or if it was relating to us. But it's an AMR RP letter head at the top. But did that not? Oh, printer error. Okay, great. So we'll just.
You were just testing us.
Yeah, making sure we're paying attention. Perfect.
We take that back.
Yeah. But yeah, so at this point, we're. We, I think we're good. So, um, no other items. So thank you all and meeting, I guess, we'll just say a meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I will need a, I think, a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that. Who would, we'll all put up to a vote. Oh, yeah. Um, uh, can I get a, all in favor, say aye for adjourned this meeting? Aye.
Aye.
All righty, so motion passes. So this meeting is adjourned.